Fucking kitty you got there.
Thank you. I like my emotional support cats.
I got a cup of tea, I'll have to do.
That works too.
Most of the cats I had were emotional abuse cats, but that's I guess part for the course for cats.
I lucked out. I got two that really are good at knowing when I'm upset and coming in, sitting on my lap.
Well, that's just great. There you have a print. Oh, there we go. Okay, we'll get started now. Good morning, everyone. So today is a meeting of the committee, the whole, and we're calling to order in the ACRD offices in Port Alberni, which puts us in the territories of the Hoopatset and the Tshak First Nations. And we should just recognize firm and acknowledge that, appreciate that. So this meeting is conducted as in a hybrid format, which means we have folks online and we have folks in the room. So we'll do a round of introductions, but because we have an online meeting, we do have a connection and a live stream through YouTube, which is embedded on our website, but you can get to it on YouTube specifically as well. And if somebody took the time in the virtual gallery to sign up for the Zoom meeting, they're able to be attendees on on the Zoom meeting as well. However, when we do questions at question period, if that is even the case today, I think we are, yeah, there are. There is an avenue for which we can have questions emailed, and that's the email address is responses@acrd.pc.ca. And that would be the way in which we would check in with the community if they have any comments or questions. With that in mind, that brings us to introductions. So we'll go do a round of introductions in the room and then I'll call it folks online. And go from there. So Cynthia, do you mind starting up?
Good morning, Cynthia Dick, General Manager of Administrative Services and Acting Cao.
Good morning, everyone. Cindy Silda, City of Port Alberni and alternate for Director Haggard.
I'm Randy La Course here. I'm the alternate for Sprok Lake. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. I'm Mike Spurrell. I'm the director of Sherry Creek.
Good morning, everyone. Uklamam Ray Koots for the Hoopatset Tribe Government and the Hoopatset Citizen, Pukko Chute.
Good morning, everyone. Heather Zener, Manager of Administrative Services.
Good morning, everyone. Dan Law, Mayor of Tofino, alternate for Tofino.
All right, and online we have Vida.
Beta Sega, Director for Area C, Long Beach.
Great, Vida. Susan, go ahead. Oh, you are neat though, Susan.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Susan Roth, the Director for Beaver Creek.
Thank you, Fred.
Good morning, Fred Boyko, Electoral Area Director for Bowford.
Thank you, Bob.
Good morning, Bob Beckett, representing Area A, Bamfield.
Thank you, Kristen.
Morning, Director for the Tokwatt Nation.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Good morning, Marilyn McEwen, Mayor of Yukulit.
Thank you, and Shari.
Shari Minions, Mayor for the City of Port Alberni.
I think the last is Levanna.
Good morning, Levanna Mostrangilo, Director from Yukulit First Nation.
Thank you. So I am John Jack. I'm the Director for the Yukulit First Nations and Chairperson. So that brings us into the rest of the agenda. So we have an agenda before us. It is fairly light. We have a couple of substantive items, meeting minutes, a visit from, I was going to say minister, but from Claire Turina, and a discussion on the procedures by law. Would anyone like to move the agenda as present? Thank you, Dr. Silda, seconded by Dr. Koots. Any further comments? I see none. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, that brings us into the next item, which is declarations. Does anyone have any declarations of a conflict of interest? I don't think any of our commentary is here is gonna elicit that, so I think we'll move on. That brings us to the minutes. Committee, the whole meeting minutes for March 12th, 2025. Thank you, Director Silda, for moving to a secondary. Thank you, Director Spurrell. Any further comments? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so I'd like to welcome Claire Turina to the board today. For our committee, the whole, she is here as the B.C. Ferry Authority Director, and she has an update on the authority. So welcome, Claire, and yeah, please take it away.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I'm very pleased to be here, even though I'm here in virtually. I am the representative for yourselves, for the Central Coast, Central Island, for B.C. Ferry Authority. So up to Strasscona, Courtney Comox, Cathet, Alberta尼克雷克纳奈莫 is the responsibility for my area as the Director. But I'm also just, we are all general directors as well. So although we have responsibility to the regions who nominated us, and I thank you very much for nominating me, we are also work as directors. So it's just a bit of an overlap because we have four people who are appointed by the province. But I wanted to use this opportunity. It's been nearly a year since you very graciously put my name forward as the candidate for the B.C. Ferry Authority. And I really wanted to give you a bit of an update on what's been happening since then. When I came in in May, the the Ferry Authority had been working a lot on a document called Charting the Course. It's a vision for a sustainable, resilient ferry system. I was very excited to see that because when I was Minister, and Chair Jack mentioned potentially introducing me as Minister, when I was Minister, I took, I had a passion for ferries. I live on Quadra, lived on the island for many, many years and passionate about ferries. So when I was Minister, I was very aware of the lack of a vision for B.C. ferries. I was also very aware of a lack of really thorough oversight. So we worked on starting a vision and now that vision, Charting the Course, is almost complete. It's likely to be published later this spring, early summer. And what it is, it's doing two things. It is trying to understand and integrate what communities need, how the ferry service can meet the needs of ferry users and the communities served. And the core of it, that vision, is looking at reliability and accessibility and affordability, how to integrate ferries with the broader transportation system. Obviously, there's, safety is part of everything that ferries does. Very much aware of reconciliation because the ferry system, as we know, works the coast and there are many indigenous nations who live and work and have traditionally been on the coast. So we need to make sure that it recognizes that. And also trying to shape how B.C. ferries will prioritize their investments. So it's looking at what we need to do now and what B.C. ferries need to do now and towards the future. I think one of the tests we're going to see in the coming weeks is the B.C. ferries, as I said, Heard has got this new major vessel replacement project. They want to be building a number of new vessels for the major routes. Obviously, it's going to be a massive cost and the B.C. Ferry Authority, which I sit on, has been, has submitted to the commissioner the sense that we really need to make sure that the public interest is represented there and how we define that public interest. So we are seeing how that will come out. The commissioner's response is due. We think it's end of this month. But the Charting the Course work has also strengthened relationships, I think, between the operator and local government, so regional districts and municipalities, to make sure that there is a better understanding of the integration of what communities need, what the the municipalities and the regional districts need. And it works both ways. So it's not just ferries saying this is what we want to do. It's definitely the municipalities reaching out to the ferry system. So another part of the, what the the vision is, is to try and understand sort of the demand for the ferry system, where it's going to go in the coming years, how many more people would travel if service was increased, trying to reflect what we have seen in population growth in the last few years and how to, how that's going to expand, which we think will also both help, obviously help the ferry system, but also help communities plan. So it's, that's, that's a sort of long term. It's iterative. It's, yeah, we're going to continue working on demand. I think things have already shifted with, things will shift now with the tariffs coming in. Things will shift with changes of immigration. Things will shift as, as, well, basically as time moves on. So this is something that will be continuing to evolve, to understand the demand. One of the things I'm very pleased about is the the integration of the public interest. And people have said, what is the public interest? As a minister who put this into the Coastal Ferries Act when it was amended back in 2018, I regard the public interest as literally how to ensure that the needs of communities and the needs of individuals who use and depend on the ferry system is reflected in the service of the ferry system. And that is the lens which I, as a director, work, and I think it's a lens, while it's continuing to be refined and understood by everyone, it is the lens that we are really narrowing down on. So it is just very much that this is why I'm very pleased to have this discussion with you today. It's because the public interest is what, one thing is what your communities need, what you feel is needed. And so to have that, make sure that our decisions are balanced and that we are using that, that public interest lens, very important to have these sorts of discussions. And so we can integrate community insights. I know that when it was consultation last year, and there's been so much B.C. ferries consultation, I realize that it just goes on and on and on. But there were consultations last year, and I know that one of the things that your regional district talked about was Bamfield and the opportunity to grow tourism in Bamfield. And I think that's something that is going to show up in the final Charting the Course vision, the how we can support communities in economic development. So got to be realistic. We've just seen the budget come through two weeks ago, and we're seeing what's happening with tariffs and everything is pretty scary and pretty strapped for cash. So when, while it'd be wonderful to get a big boost of cash from the province, one of our main suppliers of cash, it's not going to be happening. So that is something that we are very aware of as we plan for the future and as we work on the vision is that there isn't going to be a massive, we can't see a massive rescue package coming. It's not going to be suddenly everything that we all want, all our communities want there. B.C. Ferry Services is working on, they've got the new vessel, major vessel replacement program. We're seeing other areas where they're looking at electrification, which are continuing. But there is going to be, I imagine, sort of a slight retrenchment because of everything that's happening. But we do need to have a overarching plan, and that's one of the, I think, one of the benefits of Charting the Course. It's not just, it's not a plan for today and tomorrow. It's a plan for 10, 15, 20 years hence. We have obviously B.C. ferries at the planning table. The province is there. Communities are pulling into that. We want to see how, how we can ensure that we get that voice well heard. So as I say, I think we're expecting the vision to be the coastal, the Charting the Course, this vision to be completed by the end of summer. And we'll be very much looking forward to having longer conversations with you about it, about how it can really assist and gaps and everything else at that time. So I'm going to leave it there. I know that on the agenda, there's just 10 minutes, and I don't want to eat too much of the 10 minutes for, give the opportunity to have some questions as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. That was very succinct and, yeah, very informative. Okay, we already have a speaker's list, so we'll go with Dr. Beckett and Dr. Boyko. Is there anybody else? And then Director Silda. Please go ahead, Director Beckett.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, Claire, for your presentation this morning. I was encouraged by your address and hearing of your insight and, and your personal vision for the future, specifically on public engagement. And I don't want to go into details regarding what I perceive as a lack of consultation in the past, because that is the past. But one of the reasons that I was pleased that the board extended an invitation to you today is that I'm looking for assurances that at the end of the contract, that Greg and the Lady Rosemary Services has with B.C. ferries. And let me, let me digress for just a second. I couldn't be happier with what Greg is doing, the services he's providing. But I, I think what's critical is that before the next contract is let, our communities, our regional government, and our residents need to have appropriate dialogue. That's what in my mind has been missing. And I understand that, especially when it's, it's, you know, a contractual agreement between B.C. ferries and a private operator. You know, there are things that, that cannot be quite as transparent as, as, as in other government matters. But we have not had that dialogue, that opportunity to, to meet and sit down and to support Greg or whoever the, the next individual is that's providing this absolutely critical service to our communities along the inlet. And not only that, but to look at, at other opportunities, especially in light of what's going on south of the border. So again, I won't take any more of your time and the board's time, but I think what I'm looking for is a commitment, assurances that before the contract is let, there'll be adequate time to have what I feel is inappropriate engagement with our communities and our residents. So thank you very much, Claire.
So I, I thank you, and I understand the real, the real needs there, very in, I mean, it's such a vital service that serves the inlet, that serves Bamfield, and we are looking at what's going to be, you know, the changes that are going to be coming, as we see south of the border. I think that everybody is, there's going to be even more pressure. And I know it's not just a tourism opportunity, but it's, it's an economic lifeline as well. So we are in the position, B.C. Ferry Authority doesn't do any, doesn't have the, the authority, isn't the, the, the board that deals with specific services. So the classic way that the B.C. ferries was put together back in 2002 was to have this two-board approach. So we are, as the authority, we are sort of a higher level. We are the voice of government is how I look at it and how I explain it. We hold a share. And we ensure that the services board, we appoint the services board and ensure that the public interest is part of that. And as with that role and with that lens of making sure the public interest is ingrained, we can go to services board and say, talk to community, ensure communities are involved in decision-making on something as vital as this, because it's not the, it's, it's not the scheduled B.C. ferry service. It is something, it is something separate, but something vitally important. So to ensure that that is brought in, we can't dictate them and say, do it, but we can request that they do it, and that request will, is definitely there, that there is a a real involvement of community in, in contract, in how this evolves, because it is, it is a lifeline.
All right, thank you for that. Next up, I have Dr. Boyko, and then Dr. Seega, and then Dr. Bob, or sorry, Silda, and then Dr.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Well, not presentation, but talk, but one thing to recognize is not just Bamfield, but the entire island is entirely dependent on B.C. ferries. If we want to go anywhere, everything we buy is trucked in on B.C. ferries. There's very little that actually comes on the rail system and very, even less it comes in on airplanes. So we need to remember everything that is going to happen comes on there. Unless it's made here, it's like some lumber products, but everything comes on there. So whenever we want to leave, that's the main road of transportation. So any decisions that are made, we need to make sure that the taxpayers, not just the B.C. government, but the Vancouver Island people that are paying for the ferry service every time they want to leave this island, is taken into account. And we've seen huge increases in the ferry costs in the past 10, 20 years. And we need to make sure that those costs are minimized over time. So need to balance if we're going to go electrify routes and we recognize the B.C. area does not have a surplus of power, like a quarter of the power in B.C. came from outside of B.C. in the past year. We need to just make sure we're doing things right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I am very aware of that. I live on Quadra Island, so got the understand island, the needs of the island, and this is why we built in the public interest into the oversight to make sure that these specific concepts, I mean, the realities are just integrated into the, the way the ferries evolve.
Thank you for that. I have, oh, I have Director Silda first, and then Director Seega.
Thank you. Thank you for your, your presentation. I guess that's what I would say. But what I want to ask is about rate increase with the new ferries. Who's going to pay right in the end? Is it going to be a rate increase? I might be talking in the weeds, you know, the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart. And also, I hear about increases, and I also hear from people about reservation waiting time. I mean, I've, I've had to wait three ferry sailings one time, and I had a reservation, but it got canceled, and so you get bumped, moved along, right? So, so how will that all fit in with the new vision? And is there any discussion on that?
Well, the, as I say, operational decisions are not the purview of the B.C. Ferry Authority. On the increase in rates, we're at the moment, the, the way that the system was set up back in 2002 is that there are set performance terms that the ferry commissioner, who has the financial oversight of what B.C. ferries services wants to do, will, there is the performance term that, that looks at how much money will be needed, whether you have to have increased fares, whether they can be, I mean, right down to what the commissioner is looking at right at the moment, is can B.C. ferries afford the new vessels they want to build? How are they going to be paid for? How much is, you know, how much is going to be coming out of borrowing? How much is going to be coming out of looking to government? How much is going to be coming out of potential fare increases? That's the role of the commissioner. We have, what, two commissioners? One was a former ferry advisory committee person, Eva Hager, who's been there for about six, five years now. She's a very ingrained in the ferry system. And the other is a former, actually, Auditor General of B.C., Carol Pickup. She's the Deputy Commissioner. So we have people who have a good, strong oversight of the financial picture, looking, are over, overlooking the whether fare increases are needed, how to make sure that plans from B.C. Ferry Services fit into the financial picture. Our view is how they fit into the public interest. Then we have the commissioner looking at how they fit into the financial picture. So that is, we've got the performance term six. We are halfway through it. There will be, B.C. ferries will be going to the commissioner in, I should, I think it's about another year, with their plans for the next round, which is performance term seven. So they are four-year term. So it's how long we've had B.C. ferries with its current system. So they will be going to them, the commissioner. This is a, both a public and private, public and regional districts can petition the commissioner and can raise concerns with the commissioner. That is part of the commissioner's role to make sure that financially, the, the B.C. ferries is literally on the right track. On the operational side, on reservations and cancel, you know, the wait times and all of this, I hear you. That's, we can't get into operational side. We can tell, you know, we do regularly tell B.C. ferries that this, you know, these are problems. For instance, we we have, when we have a board meeting, the CEO of B.C. ferries is, is there usually, often the chair of the B.C. Services Board is there. And we will tell them about concerns and to underline the concerns that we are already sharing staff to staff about saying, this is what the authority is hearing. This is what directors are hearing. This is what we really need to do. This is what we think you should be doing. So on that level, that is where our ability is. We're not involved in operate, we can't get into the operations of like, change your reservation system, because, you know, we, you know, we, we all suffer it. But we, our voices to try and encourage them to look at the public interest in this.
Thank you for that. Next up, I have Dr. Seega and then Dr. Bob.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have two sort of question comments. The first is, I can remember when there was a previous government that was going to ramp up the boat building on in B.C. so that we could produce our own ferries. And then there's a change of government, change of management, and we lost all of that potential. I would like to see us going back to that self-reliance. And I'm just wondering if there are any options for producing our ferries, at least in Canada, but certainly on one of the coasts.
Yeah, again, this is, this, this is a very interesting question. I'd say it's twofold. It is operational, so we can't sell B.C. ferries. You should go to build in Canada, build in B.C. They have gone for years and what the cheapest is, which means that we had the the German ones and the Polish ones and the Romanian ones at the detriment, I think, to our shipbuilding industry. However, there is the definite, the definite realization of the need, I'd say, the public interest and the public economic interest for keeping as much shipbuilding as possible in B.C. And that's where we go to B.C. ferries and say, you know, look at, look at this. This is employing people in B.C. It's building up our own industries. And I think that message will resonate more with what's happening south of the border. Unfortunately, I mean, I used to look at Washington State where they had in the U.S., you had to build everything in the U.S. and Washington State ferries built everything in Washington State. We don't have that, that authority here to build either in B.C. with, assuming we have the capability, and we look at C-SPAN, we possibly, we potentially do have the capability, but build in B.C. or even build in Canada. So I think that's, that's something to bring at federal election time. Who's going to, you know, say, build in Canada? I think that there is going to be a growing desire to do that in the, you know, in the coming years, seeing what's happening south of the border and to ensure that we create, you know, increase our own self-reliance.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and I appreciate that it's being considered. We would be sitting pretty right now if it had gone through the first time around, which is really unfortunate. But hopefully, the lessons from the past will be brought forward. And the other comment and concern I had is that we do have that service that brings freight and passengers down the Alberta Canal. And that's really an important connector for the West Coast, like because of the road being out fairly often, and we can get supplies in that way and people transported that way if the road between the West Coast and Port Alberni is blocked. And the other potential that I could see, and I realize this may not be in your area at all, but with the e-bikes that are now being used, the B.C. ferries has a really good opportunity for marketing transport down the canal and the West Coast is being e-bike friendly. And that would also improve the traffic congestion on the West Coast. So just, just planting the thought there. Thank you.
That's very interesting. I think this is one of the things why I was very excited initially on the the ferry vision. It started when I was minister and now has, you know, honed down to Charting the Course, which is how we can look at new, how we can look at what's happening in transportation and integrate it better. E-bikes, do we all have to take our cars? And for me, the, the question, one of the questions I had when I started this was, okay, you're in Yukulit or Tofino, and you want to go to Nelson. How do you do it without taking a car? And how can you use the transportation systems we have and have a smooth and connected journey without, without having your own vehicle? And I think that these are, these are ideas that are there, and that's why we have, we're looking at the integration of the, the transportation systems through Charting the Course, how we can net, net them, you know, weave them closer together.
Thank you very much. And any PR that you can do on behalf of the Thank you very much. And any P R that you can do on behalf of the boat that is running might help.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Seega. Next up, I have Director Law and then Director Mr. Angel.
Thanks, Claire, for the presentation. Uh just a quick note, uh Tofino is currently in discussions with the First Nation of the Howset regarding transportation and vehicles, et cetera. And I just want to bring up, just in case it's not on your radar, that Howset is thousands of people. Uh it's the only uh large community, island-based community that I know of uh without significant ferry service. And I know that uh the costs for a single person going back and forth from Howset to Tofino is disproportionately expensive. And I think it's up into seventy dollars or something per single person, uh which is a major contributor uh to ongoing inequity uh for that community. Uh so I, I think that uh, and this, these are thousands of people that live there. And uh and further to that, it's the only community I know of, maybe I'm wrong, uh with such a large population that has absolutely no vehicle uh ferry service. And what's happening is that there's hundreds and hundreds of vehicles owned by people in Howset that they need uh for personal reasons and economic reasons and every other reason. People need vehicles and they can't get them uh back and forth. And that's a big problem. And again, a major contributor to to ongoing inequity. And my question really, I mean, you don't have to answer it now, is why is that community uh so different than every other community in B C areas?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I won't answer it now, but it's definitely something that will raise with my, my colleagues around the board and um with B C Ferry Services, because it, it's there is going to be no magic wand. We're not going to, there's no way B C fairies at the moment, or we'll say, we need to put a ferry in. But how to make something work, um whether there is that, how that possibility can do, I think this is something we can start working through, through uh both charting the course and continued discussions with B C fairies. So thank you very much for raising that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Next up, we have Director Mr. Angel, and then Director Sparrow, and then back to Director Seega.
Thank you. Wrong device. I'm apologizing. I'm sorry that you're going to get the wrong device on there from you on the screen. But anyways, I am very curious about your electrification projects. And you mentioned that in your presentation, and I know there's been, I haven't followed it as closely, but I do know that there is, there are some vessels out there that do run by electrification, although they're smaller. Um and it's starting to look like a more viable opportunity for fairies to go in that direction. So I'm just wondering, where is that on the strategic plan for B C fairies? And understanding that we do really want things built in Canada, although the building of those vessels comes from uh a lot of the parts come from all around the world. So um I wonder, does Canada, does the government of Canada have a plan in place for allowing those types of research and development to happen with B C fairies and the use of more grand electrification vessels?
Um well, a couple of things that, again, I pre-prefaced this with the fact that we are not the operational board, we are the authority board. So um the B C fairies' plans for electrification, some are already going ahead, but some are going to obviously the, the future concepts built into charting the course. Um so B C fairies is looking at electrification of certain shorter routes, including the one that I'm on, which is the Quadra Campbell River route. Um and the Galley, uh Gabriola, um the Naimo route, they're going to be switching those fairies to be um electric, electric fairies. Um using the present model of ferry, they're switching it out to an electric one and the cost of that working in B C Hydro. Uh it is something that that is working on. Um I think that it is the way of the future of how, how they can make sure that fairies are, um the big fairies as well as some of the smaller fairies are shifting to that. Um the, there is, there used to be capacity. I know that, I'm not sure if it's still there, but there was a a battery maker in the Lower Mainland that was actually selling its batteries for fairies in Scandinavia. So there is, we have the skills and we have the um, some of the technology there. It is something B C fairies is working on. It's obviously working closely with B C Hydro and um working with the, the ferry designs and whether it is uh mostly through the, through private enterprise, I, I thinking, but um it is something that's happening. With Hydro, B C Hydro is looking at increasing the capacity of generation on the island, um which will make it that much easier for electric fairies to be operating from the island, because there'll be more capacity. So um long answer to say, it's in the plans. Um it's not going to be overnight, but it is something that really does need to happen. I agree with you on that.
Thank you for that. Uh next up, we have Director Sparrow, then Director Seega, then Director Boyko.
Thank you for that. Um I have a few questions and a few things. Uh the way you talked about B C fairies building in Canada and in the States, they have what's called the Jones Act, I believe. It's a federal law for building shipbuilding, there's, there are ships there, so it's something to look at. Um you say you're from Quadra Island. Um Quadra Island has two fairies now, not one, which is great. However, if you happen to have a trailer, as I do when I go over there, um low tide's an issue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because uh the fairies are different now, and if it's low tide, they won't let you on because you scrape bottom. So you have the tides and the winds, because B C ferry seems to have a nasty habit this last few years of cancelling during windstorms. So if you have a reservation, you do get there. And you're in lineup and a windstorm hits, you're no longer. So you're becoming an unreliable supplier to the only way we can get on and off the island. Just rather than
I'm, it's windy today. I'm with you. I was going to go and visit, I was going to go into Campbell River and it's windy. I don't think the fairies are running.
Well, hopefully I'm going to have a trailer because you probably don't Yeah, but um my other thing is, um is it called Experience Card or Discovery Card that you
Hmm, yeah.
Um and I'm thinking about Banfield now, and they take the secondary provider to go to Banfield. Would that be something you can consider to put on too? Because it's not a B C ferry, but a third-party provider and giving them a lower cost to get on the fairies because a little more cost prohibitive. And if that was further expanded to what uh Director Law was saying about the Howset, that would also make it more cost-effective. Because then you have a thirty percent discount, I believe, if you happen to have that card. Is that not correct?
Um again, prefaces services and the delivery of services not our purview, but um the, what you're talking about, the bottoming out of the Quadra Ferry, it's just one of those like, how did they design a ferry and put it on the route that it's not going to be able to serve the route? These are questions that um still continue to ask. Um and we still continue to ask the, the Services Board and the CEO of B C fairies about how these things happen and how to ensure that they don't happen in the future. Windstorms, again, um still uncertain about the, the cancellations. I have talked to the CEO about this, and he says that it's all worked out mathematically and the um it's not coming out of Victoria, although the, the masters of the vessels that I ride on say that it usually does come out of Victoria, they cancel if the wind gets too strong. Um and the fairies are very different on this route now. Um and the Experience Card, it's something we'll, we'll um suggest that it is how, whether it can be expanded or not. I mean, is anyone who lives on the island is using Experience Card? It's, it's great to have that, that you can get um some form of frequent user um benefit for it. Only problem is the inequity of that you have to pay cash upfront. You've got to have a credit card to pay cash upfront. And B C fairies is then holding on to two hundred dollars of your money while you work through that uh that amount. But um something that we, we can suggest that is thought of for other, other um communities.
All right, thank you. Uh next up, we have Director Seega.
Uh thank you very much. Yeah, I'm, again, I'm going back to Mayor Law's comment about um communities that are on islands off of uh the West Coast. And historically, there was federal funding for an RCMP boat that I'm familiar with. And the, I think it was the Uchuck Two that actually provided services on the West Coast, which brings to mind the question of whether um there is federal funding going to our ferry system. And if not, perhaps we should approach them.
Uh, there is no federal funding going to the ferry systems, I believe. Um they have been approached many times for assistance and uh for various reasons. Um for equity, because you look at Marine Atlantic in uh the in the East Coast and others, um they are not, have not been willing to come to the table. Um but the, yes, there, there are police boats that go, I, I, as former M L A for North, North Island, uh there was a it's actually a detachment in Court McNeil served the West Coast um out of Nooka. And they had a boat, it was primarily Zodiac, I believe, but they had the boat, but there was also the Uchuck, which is has, I believe, some support from B C fairies, because it is, if you look at a map, it actually says a B C fairies route, although it's not a you know, a, a B C fairies traditional route. It is, but I think there is some support to ensure deliveries of goods up there in the Uchuck.
Thank you. Good information.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is Director Boyko.
Thank you, Chair. We seem to have a lot of operational-type questions about things that matter directly to us personally and the people we represent. If you're not the person we should be talking to about this, how can we get that person into our boardroom so we can ask those questions?
We have um talked to B C fairies about this, and I think that two things. One is we can uh tell B C Ferry Services that you are, your regional district would very much like to have a conversation with them about the specific services that your communities have provided with. And um so we can ask them, and I think if, if you want to send a request, we can get you exactly the people that you need to be sending your requests to, to make sure you get the person um who is the the service provider rather than the overseer of the service.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I think from the number of questions we have from multiple directors within the same problem we're having, that'd be a great thing to do. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we can make sure you get the names.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, I had a few. Um first of which is, I really appreciate the update on the visioning process that's being completed. And I'm wondering to what degree there is a difference between what you do and how that affects, or that might affect operations specifically around uh crew complement and reliability. And so um are you able to, you know, communicate those kind of things through a vision? And, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't communicate those through a vision. Um we communicate those through regular conversations. Um we are with, with services, both the board and the, the company, um making sure that this continues, because it is exceedingly frustrating that, you know, we've got the vessels there and it's not running because they don't have the crew. Um the CEO has been saying that um they are last year, and I believe this year, they have been getting more people hired to ensure that they don't have the crew shortages. I know on certain routes, they have changed the shifts to ensure that they don't get the crew shortages. Um and they are bringing um people in. Hate to say the, the war in Ukraine helped B C fairies a lot, because they've got a lot of uh people who could drive the boats um came over. So I, they are, they, something they're very conscious of. Um they are working on, and it's something that we continue to um advocate for to make sure that the service runs. They are bound by Transport Canada regulations about how many people they need on each vessel. I know that when um the fairies switched to the cable ferry for Buckley Bay to Denman, they were able to reduce the crewing on that. And Transport Canada said it's okay, but the um the B C Ferry Marine Workers Union were very concerned about safety by doing that. And so it's, it's getting that balance of crew, what Transport Canada demands, and um the, literally, the, the people who will work with in B C fairies.
Great, thank you. I, I guess what I was getting at was that um in terms of messaging, I think that affordability does matter. But I also think that reliability is a component of affordability, especially if we talk about people who aren't um because there are different subsets of the community who depend on various, on, on types of service. But for the folks who are commuting over for work or need to get to a place for a specific reason, the cancellations that we can control are the ones usually around crew complement. Because we can't argue with the weather, right? So that's, um no one should hold it, hold anything against uh the authority or B C fairies about the wind. That's not, that's not, doesn't make sense. But
Yes.
I think what I'm saying, though, is that affordability doesn't matter, but that seems like it might be a conversation around the type of service, but route uh that is provided. But I would say that there's a component of reliability that matters, because it, it kind of relates to public transportation. People won't use it if it's reliable and frequent. And so the only component of reliability that we can affect generally has to do with whether or not a a ferry is cancelled because they couldn't find the crew. And so I would say, and I'll say this out loud, that if it costs a bit more in labor costs to have a higher reliability, that may pay off depending on the circumstance and the route. And I, I'm hoping that that is uh reflected in the considerations of whoever does that math.
Hmm.
But I do think that with all of that being said, reliability, accessibility and affordability, those are all components of reconciliation. Especially the things that, that Director Law, Mayor Law has said already, taking steps to ensure that people can get where they need to go without having to pay exorbitant costs. Because it's not just the seventy dollars that, that takes, that it takes for an Howset member to get to Tofino. Until the West Coast community stepped up and created a public transit system out there, there wasn't much option for them to get to where they needed to go. So we have communities in this regional district that have taken what it's, uh taken the steps necessary to provide an affordable and hopefully reliable system that will help citizens get to where they need to go for all of the reasons we, we don't need to get into. And I think what we need to do is ensure that we can have that when it comes to B C ferry services. Notwithstanding the fact that we would very much appreciate the consideration of a service to and from Howset. So with all of that being said too, I do think that some kind of conversation around build in B C or source fairies and for all of those kind of considerations that the authority is really considering, I think those are all great. And I think I will echo what you're saying about ask these questions of our local federal candidates to make sure that this is a conversation that hits where it needs to go. B C fairies isn't just a provincial endeavor, it's something that is subject to the decision-making government, which means we have to find ways to get messages through to the people who make those decisions. So uh well-received message, and we'll take that into account when we have our conversations. So um I want to thank you for your presentation. I'm going to let Mayor Law finish us off and then we'll go, uh we'll, we'll get out of here. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Jack.
Because thanks very much again. I appreciate the visioning. And just a quick point of clarification, that seventy dollars uh that is off the top of my head, I believe that is also B C ferry subsidized. The real cost to an individual is, if they were to charter a boat, is hundreds, hundreds of dollars.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their, their time and the questions. And um this will be very much integrated into our um as we, as we move on the charting course and as we have further discussions of B C fairies. And be very happy to come back and continue the conversation uh when we finish charting the course later this spring into the summer.
Thank you so much. Uh so on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your presentation and, and for staying so long and, and having a good discussion.
Pleasure. Thank you very much.
Connecting with you again.
Okay, bye.
Okay. Well, thank you everyone. That brings us into, uh my, my computer being off. My apologies. Okay, so that brings us into item six. And we only have one item under six, and that's a discussion of the procedure bylaw. So uh Heather, please uh take it away. So there was an overview of the work that's being done and the topics to be considered on the procedure bylaw. It sounds like you're just reporting and maybe looking for direction for next steps. reporting and maybe looking for direction for next steps.
Yeah, so today is the second meeting. So we met last Wednesday, realized some of you weren't here for that. But is today is a carry, carrying on. So I am looking for feedback from the committee. So I did email you a copy of the presentation. I included last week's presentation. So today's is starting on page twenty of your PDF. There also is printed copies here. Charles, if you want to come up and grab a printed copy, they're on the, on the podium there. So last committee, the whole meeting, we started the review. And I did provide a summary of what was, what direction was provided and that is in your agenda package. So today we're going to keep moving through. We may not, we may not get through everything that I have put in my PowerPoint presentation, but that's fine. Just a reminder that there are going to be things that I will need to come back to at a future meeting because we're not going to have all of the answers today. And just a reminder that before we finalize a new procedures by law for the regional district, it does require public notification. So it does require a public notification process for input. Okay, the next section we want to review is the order of proceedings in business. And this just outlines the order of things on, that appear on your agendas. And we're not going to get into this yet because it really depends on the remainder of the bylaw. So we're just going to skip past this one. The next section is sixteen and this is a section to do with late items on any agenda. And right now it just basically says the corporate officer shall have required prepare a late agenda. So in my opinion, it's pretty loose. It's pretty unstructured. And it doesn't provide any timelines for receiving correspondence. So sometimes we have late items, sometimes they come in five minutes before we start a meeting, which is not ideal because we need to ensure that all directors see this information with some of you being online. I need to scan it and email it to you and ensure I email everyone and not forget anyone. So I'm interested in setting up some timelines so that we can put a cutoff on late items. So I have proposed some changes. So an item not included on the agenda must be considered at a meeting. Must not be considered unless it's approved by the board with a majority of members. Members, matters arising after the preparation of the agenda. If not acted on in the timely manner, could prejudice or compromise either the regional district's position or position of a constituent or group of constituents. So those are the only items that would be considered late items. If they're not of that matter, then they would be referred to the next agenda. So currently for the planning department, they have four thirty P M the day before a board meeting as a cutoff for their timelines. So if we, if we, one of the proposals last meeting was to look at all planning applications at EA meetings. If we do this, the timeline would have to align with that EA meeting, not the board meeting. So I'm just going to stop there and I'm just going to ask the committee if you have any thoughts on this proposal to change the late items section and put a bit more structure around it.
Any comments, Director Law? Yeah, thumbs up. Any other thoughts? Director Roth, please go ahead.
Thank you. I really want to change this because I think it's been, it, it could be abused if we don't add some specifics to it. So, yeah, I don't know exactly what would be the best, but we don't get enough notice sometimes and it, and then we make decisions and it's not good. If it's normally four thirty, at the very least, it should be at the beginning of the day, you know, ten A M. But I don't know, really know for sure what would be best. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Doctor Mr. Angelo?
Yes. So we have this problem or occurrence in our current government and I think anything within twenty-four hours from the meeting would probably be a good idea. But then again, usually we have our stuff within a week ahead of time. So maybe it should be within forty-eight hours. That's a proposed because all of us have usually busy days and one day advance before the, the time. So forty-eight hours would probably be a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you for that. So I heard kind of two items from Director Roth, one of which is the timing of the discussion of late items on the agenda and the other was whether or not we accept late items and what is the threshold for that? Is that correct, Director Roth? Yeah, she's nodding for anybody who might not be able to see. So in regards to the discussion of late items, I think my consideration would be sometimes late items, when we do accept them, are important enough to have discussions sooner than four thirty in, in the afternoon. So when we do accept them, I would like them for us to just agree where we put them on the agenda, not automatically in the late items section. And so that could be in section eight or section six, depending on what it is. I think six is correspondence for whatever correspondence for action is, right? Because that's usually, if it's not something that we do, then it might be something that is asked of us late in the day from the province or another jurisdiction. And it might require us to reply because the next meeting might be too late. So that, that's the only instance outside of usually planning matters or new materials, although I don't know if you've discussed new materials yet. In regards to late items, I would like the board to have a final say on whether or not they go on the agenda. But whether or not they're actually considered, having a threshold of like, if you don't get it in like at least a couple of days in advance. So like Monday morning at the latest, I think that's okay. I'm definitely uncomfortable with substantive items being brought to my attention on Tuesday afternoon. Right? Or the day of, unless it's like a super emergency. So I think that's a good consideration. Uh, Director Roth, please go ahead.
Yeah, it brings to mind the Chamber of Commerce issue at the last meeting with the grant aid, you know. There's no, we had, no way we had enough information to make decisions about it. And I definitely felt pushed. And it felt that there was something wrong with it. So depending on the nature of what it is. Yeah, I think that we definitely, I like all the ideas that's, that are coming out though.
Okay. So for those kind of instances of grants and aid, I think part of what the conversation becomes is maybe we discuss the item in terms of, yeah, we can talk about it on the agenda, but it's going to be about the misgivings, about a lack of information. And then a motion can be had to go, uh, these are my questions, these are my comments. Could we add this to the agenda for another meeting, the EA meeting and Cal meeting or the next meeting? Because I don't want to get into those questions and those considerations at an agenda stage. So I think part of it is how we use the tools in front of us for late items. If an item is agreed to be put on the agenda, that doesn't mean that we make a decision on it. It might just be opening comments, there's not enough information here. I have a problem with it as it is right now. I'm not comfortable. I'd like for this to be referred to EA committee or something. So it would still be technically an agenda item, but we wouldn't be making a substantive decision on it. And I don't know if making it a special agenda for those kind of conversations would be warranted because I don't know that that would always be the case. But I think we just need to know how we're going to use those tools. We don't necessarily need to build a box for it though. I don't know. Uh, what do you think, Director Roth?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think good comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else had their hand up and I completely didn't write down their name. Uh, Director Minions, sorry, did I, are, are we in okay shape here?
Uh, yeah, it was me, but I, my questions were answered. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any other comments around late items? So we don't differentiate between items that are brought up from staff because of communications they may have received from a developer, someone who's petitioning for something. Or items that are brought by members of this board? And is there a differentiation between those two things? Because that can go in either way, right? If, if, if a director brings something to the table, especially from their organization, it might be that they were requiring a council meeting that wasn't held until the Monday before the, the board meeting. And so, I mean, this is mostly for districts and, and First Nations, but like if a letter of support is needed or if some sort of like cooperation is needed, does that get treated differently than any other late item? And if so, I think what we can do is just have it subject to a con, a conversation at the beginning of the, of the meeting around the agenda going, you know, the Huayt First Nations is hoping to have a letter of support from the A C R D. We're going to build a Ferris wheel next to Bob's house. And, or something, right? And so what is the, is that, can that be treated differently than, you know, something is brought to the attention of the, of the staff that actually needs consideration because it's an oversight or a correction is needed to make sure that we're handling a contract correctly or something like that, right? There's different substantive matters. The Ferris wheel can wait. But there might be instances where a contract or other decision needs to be clarified. And so I think that can just be handled by governance and chairing and having the conversation at the beginning. It's just for the clarity of, of people looking at the procedures, I just want to kind of, it, does that warrant mentioning at all? Or is this something where we should just rely on the processes as they're written? And I'll try not to belabor every point, but I have opinions on everything about our procedures. So like, I don't want to take up too much time. But like, yeah, uh, Director Boyko?
I have similar concerns about being able to thoroughly research an item that is substantive, such as what happened last week and other items like that that come last minute. There has to be some kind of timeline to say there needs to be proper discussion on a fundamental change in services or something like that. But how do we define what's fundamental? Anything that affects a taxpayer, I say is fundamental. But living, being able to throw something large in the last minute, I don't think that's good for anybody. For any reason. Thanks.
Okay. Is it enough that you're able to say that during the agenda discussion though, right? And so, or are there things that must be done when we have those conversations? I think it feels, we need to take the appropriate steps to make sure that when people have opinions that they're not bulldozed, right? That you, you can say, no, I think we should talk about this at the next meeting or refer to your committee.
I think, no, I, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I thoroughly agree with what you said is people need to be able to say that in a meeting and be listened to and not be bulldozed. And that needs to be happening. But people need to realize that there are people that want to put time and effort into making thoroughly informed decisions, either talking to taxpayers and things like this, but having something at last minute that's substantive, you need to be able to have a chat, whether you're going to allow it or not, and not have it bulldozed onto the agenda. Thank you.
I don't know if that goes into a procedures by law. Maybe it's something we consider putting in the code of conduct for the chair. But just making sure that the chair understands that part of his or her job is to ensure that everyone gets their say. Right? That we're not, we're not skipping over that. I think there's a balancing act with somebody repeating themselves over and over again, but that rarely happens here. So I don't think that's a real concern. But we may want to look at the appropriate avenue to make sure that we enshrine values like that somewhere. Director Roth, go ahead.
Yeah, we did bring it up that we didn't have enough time during this last meeting, you know, about the chamber issue. So I do think something does need to be in writing and perhaps part of the procedure. Because what if, you know, it's a, a different chairperson or someone doesn't have the same type of experience to be able to say, hey, no, we need to take a step back here. So something in writing would be great so that we could call point of order and refer to it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if we come up with a set of values of what goes into a good decision, then we can reference those things when we go, I think this should be referred to the next meeting because I don't think we have enough time to discuss it or we don't have that information. Then you go, you know, I'll invoke, you know, one seat of that good governance section. And whether or not it goes in the code of conduct or whether or not it goes in procedures or some other document, I think it's just something that if we all agree to a set of like values and principles on how this should be done, then I think people will feel a bit better in voicing their opinions about like, I don't feel prepared and it's not because I didn't do the reading. Right? I feel like there are questions that need to be answered. And as long as that can be satisfied according to a good discussion that has some structure to it, then the board can make a decision on whether or not that's, that's followed through or not. And I think that's a legitimate way to go about doing it. But we have to make sure that we have the conversation so that nobody feels kind of left out. I can do this for every section, guys. I'm sorry. Uh, Director La Cruz, yeah, please go ahead.
I, I think it's a really good idea to have a time limit. So I heard before somebody said forty-eight hours, that would make sense. The meeting I came to the other day, they presented you something at the last moment. And you don't even have time to read it. I, I don't think that's very fair to the directors or the alternate directors. So I think there should be a time limit. Unless it's an extreme emergency, you know, then that would be different. Uh, but normally I think if, you know, you could use something like forty-eight hours. So just my thinking.
So having, having a general limit of forty-eight hours for materials and substantive items for like briefing notes and that sort of thing. I think that can be a standing rule in some way, shape or form. I think requests from outside of the A C R D is something that might, we might want to treat differently. So requests for letters of support, especially from nations uh, that aren't a part of this board either, right? So Dr. Koots, Dr. Mr. Angelo, myself and, and, and Director Johnson are all aware of the requirements for a request here. But Tishon might have their meetings on the same time as, as the city and therefore they wouldn't be able to meet some of those materials requirements in the same way, right? Unless, unless they thought about it two weeks before. And so as long as it's not kind of an internal, we need a briefing note to make a decision type decision. Is that something that can be brought to the board for your approval or not? So a, a general, so like handling things that come from staff and come up through our own processes, we have a cutoff of one thirty on Monday or something, right? Is that forty-eight hours? Or is that thirty-six? Okay. Anyway, depending on how you count it, I guess. And then the, and then, but for things that, you know, are coming from the city or from the districts or from a nation and it's a request for something or a request to sit on a board or attend something, then maybe that's treated a bit more lightly because it's not necessarily substantive in the same way. That being said, I do want to be responsive to the fact that if it costs some money, that might be a different consideration too. Uh, we'll go Director, Director Law and then Directors Roth.
Just, I know this is getting on, this is one slide, but uh, uh, just, I just noticed, I mean, we're getting on to like, you know, last minute letters for support. I think that's, you, you know, just to go back here, uh, matters arising after the preparation of the agenda, which if not acted upon in a timely manner would prejudice or compromise either the regional district's position or position of a constituent or group of constituents. I think that really is, is trying to say this is urgent, that something bad is going to happen if this isn't on the agenda. And I think it, it, you know, the conversation is sort of sliding away from that. And maybe there's some language there that could clarify, you know, what it is that an urgent, you know, maybe flesh this out a bit, uh, so that people aren't confused and this isn't a way to sort of get in the back door, slide one by, uh, you know, so if there's substantial discussion or reports needed for the committee to make an informed decision, that is not a twenty-four hour thing, right? So just, just to put that out there, it's just really just about it's, it's about urgent that would, stuff that would compromise. Just clear about that.
Okay, uh, Director Roth.
I agree with that comment. Also, there seems to be a difference between when staff receives the information and when the directors receive the information. So I would like it to be focused on when directors receive the information. Just because I did ask at the last meeting, I sent in a message ahead of time to say, you know, is this not, and that we don't have enough time for this. And it kind of came back and I didn't really understand all of it, but it seemed like, well, staff received this information at this time. So yes, we do have enough time. But yet the, the board members didn't receive it. Thank you.
I think that's a good comment. And I think tracking, receiving a comment from say, an interested party in a planning decision is, needs to be communicated more clearly. So that's, that the relevant directors are involved in some like. Director Silda, please go ahead.
Um, at City Council, we always postpone something if we, we post, we make a motion to postpone discussion until the next meeting or something like that. So, I mean, it's easy to do that too. I mean, just to make that motion if you're, if you're not ready. make that motion if you're if you're not ready.
Yeah, and I think we do have those tools here. I think it's just making sure that we're putting in the rules so that people are comfortable with suggesting that without it being seen like it's a bunsight between a director and the staff or or something, right? So I think that's just something we need to take into consideration, and it is subject to the vote of the board as well. So this isn't a consensus based approach. It's like if we if we want to speak to this or not, it it's a vote, so we can, we can do that. So what I think what we do need to do is make sure that there is ample opportunity for people to speak their opinion on whether or not an item should go on the agenda for discussion now or later because of it. And I think that's a political consideration too, because if someone's uncomfortable with a decision and somebody puts it on the agenda anyway, that may drive drive a wedge or may may, you know, entrench someone in in something that didn't need to be that way. And I I don't think that that's necessarily something that's like a conversation around the procedures, but rather how we use the procedures to engender good governance and good governance practices. So I really, I really like the idea that a lot of the time the city postpones things because that gives ample opportunity to have a good discussion and people to be comfortable. And I think that's just something we need to remind ourselves as as we do our work here. I think we're okay to move forward, Heather. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this slide is about voting at meetings and how those votes are recorded. Uh, so our current practice in the meeting minutes is to record uh either carried or defeated. And the directors have the option to request a recorded vote before uh the motion is put to question. Um, back in twenty twenty three, we did propose to amend this in the procedures by law. Um, to change it to uh carried unanimously, defeated unanimously, or in cases where um unanimity is not reached, record the names of those that voted against the motion. Um, so we proposed that, we sent it out for public input, and then um the board did not support that. So my question today is, is there any interest in revisiting this? As well as is there any interest in removing the name of the director who moves and seconds a motion? And replace it with just the motion was moved and seconded. So let's stop there.
Okay, we'll start with uh Director Vaughn and Director Boyko.
I suggest uh it should be changed from carried and defeated to carried and defeated.
Ten points awarded to Director Vaughn. Gary, okay. Uh, Director Boyko, please go ahead.
Thank you. I think Director Law was or Mayor Law was gonna say, oh, we record the votes at Dofino, we should do it everywhere, but I still think it should be recorded. Um, our directors need to be accountable for the decisions they make, especially when they're spending taxpayer money. That being said, I do support the say that the motion was moved and seconded rather than directly who did it because we often will forward and second a motion to enhance debate on it and allow debate on it and not necessarily it it, the people that move it second it should be the ones that supported as well, but sometimes you have to do that to get debate on. This recording of votes should be revisited. And whether we do it with the current board of directors or the ones after an election a year and a half, that's up to the board to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Director Sparrow?
Thank you. I I'm gonna sort of echo what Director Boyko said about moving second it because we need to a bigger board and you've been on them. The guy saying move in second, and the guy doesn't move because it's hard to figure out who's saying what. So um it would make it easier. And yes, sure, moving in second doesn't mean you're in favor. It could mean you're totally opposed to it, but you wanna get the debate going so you can defeat the motion. So moving in second, it doesn't really need to be anywhere.
Okay, uh, Director Ross, please go ahead.
Thank you. I think all votes should be recorded, so I'd like I'd like to have it revisited. I also am wondering, is there a legislated requirement for to record votes when it's requested? Like, I thought that was part of the legislation. I just needed to clarify it.
It's a part of our procedures by law. I don't know if that's in uh legislation. I would have to check.
Okay, I think it is, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I think the only concern I have, and it's kind of relatively minor, is that if we are going to record votes, we just need to have administrative processes that are set up to do that quickly. I just, I can see this as being difficult depending on the hybrid format as well as just whether or not people raise their hands all the way up and so on and so forth, like. So we're a big enough group that it can get onerous if it isn't done correctly and isn't done with vigor. Um, so I think it just comes down to just making sure we have the appropriate um processes administratively to go, okay, we know who's voting for what and we can count it quickly and go through that process. And then that's, and part of that is how do we quickly record it? So that someone doesn't have to go back and actually watch the videos once more just to get that. So I don't know that we necessarily have to record every vote, but I think the substantive matters that have to do with like briefing notes and decisions and planning, those are definitely something that could be on the table for for record keeping. But whether or not we pass the minutes, um, I think that's a different conversation entirely. Uh, Director Sparrow, Director Roth and Director Boyko.
Thank you. Uh, going down the vote thing, I'm on the next page, by the way. Uh, so when we do votes here, um, we see who is for and who is against, and there would be debate right now, winner wins, right? But on this next page, it says, any member who abstained from voting shall be deemed to have voted in affirmation or affirmative. If that is going to be new, then anybody in order to defeat any motion, you need at least eight votes of a full board. Um, so if you get, sorry, you get three votes of a full board and and two or four and three are against, you technically you defeated the motion by those who voted, but the new way would be, it would be carried because those who didn't put their hand up didn't vote, so there could be affirmative. So I mean, eight refusal refusal to get something defeated. And secondly, um, when you do a recorded vote, we all vote, but when you do a non-recorded vote, it's your choice to vote or not. That's the way it seems to be now. Hold on, I'm
Can I just clarify?
Go ahead, go ahead, Heather, and then
So it, I I'm proposing on the next slide to include that in the procedures by law that
Can can we move to that slide?
Yeah, sorry. Um, the second one from the bottom, that is not, that is not new in legislation. That is the legislative requirement. If you do not vote, your vote is recorded as affirmative. So that's not new. I'm just saying to record it in the procedure.
So so the way it is now, if we make a vote and three say yes and four say no, we see that's soon to be defeated, but that's not technically correct. It should be, you need eight refusals to defeat a vote, if we're all here.
Okay, I get where you're coming from now. So let's make sure that, okay, let's make sure that that that's recorded correctly in the in the meeting minutes and that sort of thing. So people need to know that if they oppose something, they have to raise their hands high and be counted. It's not it's not like your hand down is is, so what is it? Silence is acquiescence, right? So that's the idea. So um, like, I don't vote in the positive because I'm chairing the meeting, but I do, when I do disagree with something, I do show that I'm voting against something. Um, because of that, um, interpretation. So I don't think that's new, but I think what your point is, we have to be explicit about it. It's not a four to three vote. It's a eight to three vote or whatever, right? Um, because of people who didn't raise their hands. Is that correct? Sort of?
Yeah, right now, so we look down the board. How many people we got here? We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we need probably seven no votes to defeat anything. So anything we bring to the board pretty well is gonna be carried unless we get a majority, even not raising your hand is saying yes. Correct? So um even though you wanna record votes, pretty well, almost all the votes will be carried because some people don't vote every vote, and that means they're saying yes.
Yeah, I I and I think that comes into, as long as people understand that that's the interpretation from now on and always was, um, and that even though you don't need to raise your hand, it is probably a good idea just for good governance and clarity that you do vote in the positive. And I think just how we figure out doing that while we're online is probably the biggest point of contention when we're trying to count the votes. Um, so people who are raising their hand, we have to have a standardized way of like like people who are waiting to speak, that's not raising your hand. You have to like raise your hand physically on the screen, I think, or something like that. We'll figure out what that looks like because there are ways to vote with the computer as well. Um, so we'll go to Director Roth and then Director Boyko.
Thank you. I was just gonna say that um there is technology available to do recorded votes, and it's really simple and really expen- inexpensive to do it. So maybe we can be looking at some technology. Thank you.
Yeah, and and effective. Thank you. Uh, Director Boyko and then Director Mustangello.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo what Director Ross just said. Just look at what Nanaimo does. They got electronic voting. Everything is recorded. You can go see what everybody does. Simple, easy, effective. You don't have to watch videos because right now the camera's panned out in the boardroom. I can see everybody, but when someone talks, it pans right in and you can't tell who's voting for what. So looking back on cameras and videos is not effective and not a way to go moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a conversation about having an owl system in addition to what we have here too. That's uh, I think that's technology related. Um, yeah, once again, Yuki's leading the way on that particular conversation. Uh, Director Mustangello, please go ahead.
Yeah, that was something I was gonna ask was can we have any electronic voting system that um that is what other people have mentioned? It's a little bit better. And also, is there an option to to see the board members when we do a vote? Uh, so again, the owl was mentioned there. Um, that the the no voting to abstain from a vote, is that the normal route of practice? Like, so previously, if someone abstained from voting, um, was it counted as affirmative or was it just removed? That person's vote was removed from the total number?
Yeah, it's counted as a like, okay, I'll go for it. It's 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 um, it's not voted abstention. It doesn't remove yourself from the quorum and it doesn't remove yourself from the the number. And so that's that's the way that it is in the LGA, I think. So I don't think we can change that unless we convince the province to change it. So there's no like abstention. You can't step back and go, I have no part of this. It's, you you have to take a stand. Um, and doing nothing means you're okay with whatever is being proposed. Um, yeah. Director Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, I as long as I've been on the board, I've known that if you don't put your hand up, you're voting yes. Um, and I'm finding being online, the voting goes so quickly that it either you have to slow down and let people raise their hands or just go with the flow and say if they didn't raise their hands, it's a yes because it goes by so quickly. Half the time when you get to know people are raising their hands from saying yes.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. So I think being a little more explicit with how we express votes and record them is probably going to engender a bit more understanding and in where people stand. I would say though that uh voting intention is something that should be communicated actively by people who have opinions on a given matter, and that should be done during discussion beforehand, even if it's just two sentences. Thank you for for that. And I I agree with the comment and I agree with the motion, and then you go on from there. Um, whether or not somebody's putting up their hand or not because of the way that the votes work should be interpreted differently. Unless we wanna make sure that everyone understands that they can vote electronically because there are ways to integrate online with in person. It just comes down to usually using a third device and some program that interfaces directly with Zoom. Um, and that's not hard to do. Gotta make sure it's secure, which is also not hard to do. Um, Dr. Mustangello and then Dr. Silda.
Yes. One last item is when we have some of the votes and we have kind of a long discussion going on before that, and then all of a sudden we're saying what the vote. Sometimes it would be, or maybe it should be mandatory, that when we call for that recorded vote to just state exactly what it is that we're voting for, although because sometimes the discussion goes pretty long in between what the statement was and it gets a little bit confusing sometimes. So it would just be really good if we could have a clear statement on exactly what we're voting for at that time.
Okay, we'll repeat the motion um once more before we call for a vote, especially when it's a substantive matter. Um, sometimes it might just be a reference of, is everyone okay to move to a vote to receive the reports? And so that's not necessarily reading out the motion specifically, but I think that gets to the heart of the matter uh fairly readily. I would say that it is okay for directors to interrupt me with a point of order, and that's what a point of order would be is, oh, I'm sorry, what are we actually voting on? And I have seen directors do that in the past, but it it is an option available for everyone, and it is not out of line as long as it's not abused. Um, so I I would I would say that everyone should remember the conduct of, say, Dr. Bennett in the past. He was always on with the points of order, but it was always clarifying. And as grading as it could have been, it at some times it was actually appreciated because everyone kind of knew um we're on the same page at the same time. Uh, Director Law and then Director Boyko.
Just a a note, the point of order is is about process, uh, but a point of information is about for clarity. So there's a different point of information. Point of privilege, of course, is something else entirely.
Yes, I stand corrected. Thank you. Uh, Director Boyko. Sorry, I'm Director Silda. But we cannot hear you, Director Boyko.
How about now?
Yeah, oh, good now.
Perfect. I think we're coming to consensus just to move on with this, but I think nobody's objecting to the actual recording of votes. It's just a matter of figuring out how to do it, be timely about it, be accurate and move on. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Director Silda.
Just just to clarify too that like last meeting, um, I didn't put up my hand for something and it's because I'm on the fence, like, oh, man, I do agree, but I don't agree. And I know where my vote was going, right? I mean, I know it would be in the affirmative. I've been in, um, on on um in politics too long not to know that. So, yeah, just wanted to make sure that's known. I I do it at the city sometimes too, man, I don't agree, but yeah, I do. So.
All right, thank you for that. Director Sparrow?
Just one more little thing. Um, so we do it electronically. I know that um people on the West Coast occasionally lock up their computers. That's gonna be a bit annoying. So that's something I also consider is we're doing a vote and all of a sudden you see the person not moving because and then move late. It it is a little annoying, but it could change a vote.
That is, that is true. And I think I think what we'll need to do, and that's good to point that out, is that when there are technology disruptions or the potential for that, we're just very uh careful to do it right the first time, but failing that, making sure that it's clear that we might have to do this over again. Part of that, I think, is not to open up debate once more, but rather just get to the vote. Um, depending on, because gaming the system in that way is possible as well. So I think once again, that's a good governance conversation, and that's whether or not the chair is doing his or her job. So I think that comes down to kind of an arch of using those those technical aspects, but um, I think what we may wanna do at the end of this process is just kind of uh once again kind of go over the procedural tools that are available to all directors, like what your your rights and obligations are in regards to using these those tools so that you feel comfortable in making a decision. So I'm I'm gonna invoke the fact that I think we all agree that if we can find the right technology to do this quickly, do this effectively, do this accurately, then we can we can move forward. I think there are solutions to all the concerns that we have. It's just figuring out what we need to do. Um, how we integrate an owl system so that there's always the opportunity for someone to hit the panorama and see how people are around the table when they're online would be good, not just for directors, but I think for people who are watching at home to see whether or not, you know, John's got his head down all the time when he's not talking, what he's doing. Well, I'm taking notes, but they might not know that, right? So those are the kind of things where um seeing that could have benefit, uh, especially for clarity, especially when when folks are here. So um, I think we can move on to the next section, and I do have a comment about this, but I I think it's not that much of a difficulty. Go ahead.
Thank you. And you've given us good direction, so um we'll look, we'll explore the technology solutions. Uh, so the next section is section eighteen uh to do with the chief administrative officer. I'm not familiar with the history of why this is included in the procedures by law. I've looked at several other um local government bylaws, and it's not common practice from what I have seen. So um I think it's more of a relationship between the board and the C A O and doesn't necessarily need to be in the um in the bylaw, but I'll, I think John's got some comments.
Yes, and I think they're only slightly related to this. I don't think we need a section relating directly to the C A O. It kind of mixes the the two sides of of decision making. The C A O is responsible for clarity of information and context, but doesn't get a vote. And so part of the conversation that I But doesn't get a vote. And so part of the conversation that I, I would like to have with, with the board here is I don't want to put Daniel on a position where people who are at this board feel like he is politicizing himself, because that doesn't do him any favors, but also don't want members of the public to think that he is being politicized by me or other people. And so making sure that people understand that he is here to clarify the information that is written and presented and help people understand the rules is, is okay and understand what it is we're doing, providing background. But he, he should not be viewed as someone who is making an argument that is fundamentally political, but rather maybe clarifying statements and telling people how the, how things are set up. And so I don't know what that looks like specifically. I support this change. I think it's also partly dependent on whether or not the chair, like, lets Daniel speak, and that's me. So when I call on him, he should speak. Um, but ha, but getting clarified information from a member of staff who isn't Heather is usually done through Daniel. So if we need to hear from, the, just like you speak through the chair to a, to a delegation, I have to go through Daniel to hear from Jenny or Alex or someone like that, because they're not our employees, they're his employees. Because he could actually speak for them if he wanted to, although that's probably not a good practice either. But there have been places and instances where that does occur because of the toxic relationship between staff and, and boards or councils. I'm glad to say that I don't see that very much on this side of the island, so I think we're in good shape. But once again, it's just, I think it's right to remove this. And if there are no other comments, maybe we can go to section nineteen.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so the next section is on delegations, and I've just um, pulled some things out on the screen that I want to highlight. So if a person wants to be a delegation, um, for an item that is within the jurisdiction of the board, they need to submit a request to our corporate officer, so that's our standard practice. Um, but I'm proposing to change it to seven days prior to a meeting. So currently, it's um, the Thursday before, so it's one day earlier. And I'm proposing this change so that it aligns with when our staff reports are due, which starts the uh, the preparations for the agenda uh, preparation. Um, and they need to provide any visual presentations uh, to the corporate officer forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Currently, it's um, the Friday before and um, presentations don't often come in that early. I'm often chasing them, so uh, I'm suggesting forty-eight hours ahead of time. Um, each delegation shall be allowed ten minutes, so there's no change. The board still has the option to extend that, should they choose to. Three cha, uh, three delegations per meeting, again, no change. And then um, a new thing I'm proposing is that each delegation may um, provide a two-page executive summary of their presentation for inclusion in the agenda package. So you'd have a bit more information about what the delegation is going to be speaking about or requests they're going to be making. And so again, I want that seven days in advance so that we can include it in the agenda package. Um, the corporate officer has the authority to delegate to another meeting if uh, deemed appropriate. And then um, the board cannot approve a, permit a delegation with respect to the following matters. So by law, that's subject to a public hearing, any personnel matters, any matter that's before the courts, or uh, any um, procurement process um, that's been awarded by board or staff. And then um, in addition to delegations, I'm proposing that the board can uh, consider adding a presentation section. Uh, so this is um, different from a delegation in that quite often the board invites somebody, like this morning you had invited um, the director for the ferry authority. So this would be um, when the board extends an invitation, uh, presentations could be put ahead of delegations. Um, it would also be an opportunity for um, things such as staff presentations when staff are receiving uh, long-term staff, uh, staff awards. Um, so I will stop there and turn it over to Chair.
Thank you. Um, and if you comment, I'll let Director Boiko speak first, though. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So what I understand is, instead of somebody being able to put it on a Thursday, you want to have it one day earlier on the Wednesday? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the other way is having a presentation on a Monday, requiring to have it on a Monday, so two days earlier, instead of currently having it, have it four days earlier. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't think those are big deals. I think that's actually nicer, someone's playing the presentation on the weekend, polishing it up to have it in Monday morning. That's perfect. Thank you.
I thi, I think that fits the workflow really well. You, I think you hit it on the head. Um, so my, oh, sorry, Director Roth, please go ahead.
Thank you. I, I like this, but I'm wondering about the maximum three delegation per meeting. Would that also include presentations?
So that would not.
Okay. Can we put a maximum on presentations, too?
I think, I think we should have a conversation around that. I would rather have presentations be limited to time. Um, because I'm more than happy to cut off the sergeant or, or staff and, and taking time. But when individuals from the public come in to present uh, as a delegation or petitioner, they're not I don't expect them to have the same polish in regards to them reading off of their slides or their presentation. I mean, not everyone's like that guy from Sprout Lake, right? He was prepared, he got through it, he hit every point. But there are people where this really matters and they just, they're terrified of public speaking and they might take eleven minutes to get through it. So I think a maximum number of delegations from the public, but then I'd be a little more fastidious when it comes to presentations to kind of hit their marks and, and go, go, go. Because um, we can expect that they should be practiced enough to be able to do it.
No, I agree. Yeah.
So I, I do like the idea of, of having separate presentation section, because that's a perfect place for, you know, thank you for your service and stuff like that. That's, that's really clever. I, I appreciate that, the thought that went into that. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, I, I would like to see this brought, put in place. And I think, I don't know what the presentation time limit should be. I'd like it to be half an hour at most, but understanding that there are some days where that might be untenable, given if we have our C M P and someone else and a staff report, but we'll figure that out as we go, I think. Please continue.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so the next section is twenty points of order. And I had suggested to combine it into the conduct and debate section of the bylaw. However, I realized this morning that I've not done that, so I will add that to the next um, meeting. Um, okay, so the next section is conduct and debate. So um, I'm just gonna highlight the parts where I'm proposing changes. So uh, item B, um, just changing the, the names to chair and directors, which is uh, common practice in this room. Um, and then under item G, um, a director may speak about a vote of the board only for the purpose of making a motion that the vote be rescinded or reconsidered. Um, and I'm suggesting that we um, remove this as it's already covered in another section, um, reconsideration by a member. So if there's, I'll stop it. If there's any questions, otherwise I'll keep going. Okay. Uh, carrying on, um, there's no proposed section or changes in this section, so um, unless anybody has any wishes to change anything here, I'll keep going. Okay. Um, and then I would like to propose a notice of motion. Um, we have used this and I think we used it most recently in last board meeting. But it's not, it's not uh, within our procedures bylaw, so I'd like to incorporate a process for it. Um, and providing two different ways of doing a notice of motion. So the first one would be to provide uh, written um, request to the corporate officer um, during, during the board meeting. Um, once the chair acknowledges the director, the, the notice of motion is read out, included in the meeting minutes and added to the agenda of the next board meeting or to potentially a special board meeting. Or um, written notice is provided seven days in advance of the meeting so that the corporate officer can include the motion in as the board agenda. Um, so this has been standard practice, but I'd just like to capture it in the bylaw.
I think that this, um, this is a good way to do it. I think we just all need to understand that when a director puts forth a notice of motion, it isn't necessarily a criticism on the board or the processes. It's, it might just be a way to do it. And this does, this does provide the opportunity for directors to supply their own uh, written statements and, and supplemental information. And I think that's a good avenue, because I think some of our directors are more than keen on presenting information as they understand it and for context, especially when it comes to areas or financial analysis and that sort of thing. So this would be a good avenue to, to provide for that, because the time involved means that everyone will see the same information that would be presented by a director in that conversation. So I, I like this. Um, thank you, Director Boiko, and then Director Sparrow.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think this is good. And it could be a way to make late agenda items turn into a notice of motion, so that people have full seven days to go through something. And you can request to a director that says, hey, this is a contentious item. We need to actually have proper um, investigation of this and say, turn this into a notice of motion. And I mean, someone's done that to me, and I think that's a good thing, and we should be able to free, free to say, hey, this should be a notice of motion to give people time and effort to do the research and uh, go from there. Thank you.
Uh, Director Sparrow?
Thank you. Mine's just a little point of clarity. So by a written copy, do you mean written also by email? Or do you mean written on paper? Because the way it reads means on paper almost.
Either way.
I'll just clarify either way.
I'm sorry, uh, either but not and, it doesn't need to be both?
Yeah, I'm just saying, if someone puts electronic version and then you technically haven't got a written copy, you have electronic copy, but it's, it's six in one, half does the other. I get that.
No, but clarity is important, so that's a, that's a good clarification. So, no, people don't need to come up with a piece of paper and like, put it in the hand of, we're not serving people, so it's okay. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. No, that's important. That's a good clarification.
I know the U B C M, you have to have a written copy to be given to, for, right? It, it is more particular.
Let's not talk about that. I don't want to break my teeth in anger. Okay, uh, Director Law, please go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment. Uh, i- is it possible to, I, I know that, that sometimes in Tefino we have a notice of notice of motion. Well, hold on, hold on, before you get, you flip out. It's uh, it's just, it'll, and it usually comes in business arising uh, from council members and it allows them to then go and work with corporate services to make sure that the notice of motion that is then delivered to council to, to, i- is actually uh, you know, well-written and effective. That's just an option, you know? Otherwise, the, you debate the language of the notice of motion and go back, and it can get anyway, so it's just an option.
No, I, I was actually gonna ask, because I know that Tefino does have a, a more experience with notices of motions and how they're done. And I think it's important to note that, like, directors should not have to think that they're alone in having to create their own materials. If they want to, that's great, but like, staff are there to help you kind of figure out what it is you want to do and put that forward. So it is possible. So I would want it to be in such a way that, you know, an intent for a notice of motion is considered um, like, i- in conversation outside of the board. So I, I, I don't know. I don't want to make it so that people think that they have to talk about it to the board two meetings in advance so that they do a mo, notice of motion the next week, and then it gets discussed the week after. If you hit the materials deadline, you could work with staff on creating a notice of motion sooner than that, as long as it just hits our other requirements, right? So, I, it, it sounds like it's a trust-building exercise, that a director knows that they have the opportunity to do it this way, but I just, it doesn't have to be that way if it's like, everyone's okay and has the time to help out. Like, I just don't want to make it that we have to use these mechanisms, because, you know, we don't, we don't want to talk about that. That, that's not the sense that I want to put forward. So I think there's just a balance there. Is there any other considerations about how notice of motions are taken or considered in your experience? Director Law? Sorry. Yeah, yeah. No, I was talking to you.
Well, no, I, I just know that there's uh, like, people, uh, a councillor or committee member can, can bring a notice of motion. Uh, it can be an urgent notice of motion, you know, uh, just like this, but uh, but really an effective what, you know, a way to build a very good notice of motion that is sound and uh, you know, is, is to, to take a little time and then to get help with uh, from staff that, to construct it properly, you know, so that you're not y- you know, stuck in the middle with a, a notice of motion, then you go like that, you gotta change all the wording. It's just an option. It's uh, trying to build a good motion.
I, I think anything we can learn about that process might be helpful to em, employ uh, for this board as well. Because even if things are okay and with this government, what it looks like in the next, it can be different, right? So those kind of mechanisms provide certainty and a bit of like procedural safety for, for board members to move things forward. Um, I'm just gonna give the option for the District of Clulitt or the City of Portobrani, um, mayors to provide any input. I don't know if you use notices of motion or any considerations around how this works. Uh, Director McKeown?
Hmm, yes, it's part of our agenda. Uh, there is always a um, a section that says, are there any notices of motion? So that's the uh, the opportunity for any councillor to, to put forward a notice of motion. And typically, they have worked with staff to craft the wording of it. And then that is brought forward to the, the, the next um, council meeting.
Can I just ask you a question? Where do you put it on the agenda? Up front or near the end?
It's kind of in the middle, actually.
All right, thank you. Uh, Director Minions, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, we use it similarly. Um, our section is right at the end of the um, agenda and I find that works really well, because often something will come up during a meeting that somebody would like to structure a motion on for the next meeting. And so it's nice to be able to have sort of that pause and then know that you still have an opportunity to make a motion um, for something for the next meeting. Um, we are pretty loose with how we use it. Um, sometimes, um, some members of our council will, ahead of the release of the agenda, will um, write a full, you know, motion on and have it listed on the agenda so that everyone knows it's coming. Um, and then it still comes to the following meeting. Um, but we also allow people to use it just um, to say, I'm gonna be bringing a note, a motion on this. Um, so it can be verbal and then they would go and work with staff and have that motion written on the agenda. So um, uh, we're pretty loose with how we use it. Um, we give a bit of grace to how councillors would like to use it. But um, it's definitely a good opportunity to give people a heads up.
And it's still subject kind of a good governance practices. Thank you. Um, I have Director Johnson and then back to Director Law.
Thanks. Um, I guess I have a clarifying question. Um, so if I from Tokwatt needed something, does it have to come to the board to request this? Can it? I guess number two would be, I could just take it directly to the um, corporate officer. And then it could be put on the board? Like, do I need permission from the board to put something on the agenda?
But you always need permission from the board to adopt an agenda, but how it gets considered, I think, is a different thing. Because when it comes to kind of external relations, like, we do have space for that on our agenda already. So you shouldn't have to go through this process if you have a request for a response in some way, shape or form. That's something that I would just put on the agenda on our behalf. Uh, because it, even if I'm putting something on the prospective agenda, the board has the power to add or remove pretty much anything they want. But what we're hoping to have is a mechanism for directors to put forward a notice of motion to kind of underline something that may or may not have been like, used or approached or considered. Um, I've seen the best use of a notice of motion is if something hasn't really been considered for too long, either because it's fallen off the side of a desk, or the chair is hostile to a given topic and that sort of thing. And this is a mechanism for directors to make sure that discussion can be had, even if I really don't want to have that discussion, because it's not up to me. Right? So like, how, how those procedures work is just, this is a safety valve, but it also is a way for for staff to kind of understand where directors are at in regards to, I need your help in figuring out what is presented here and how. Because I think we should go in this direction, but there isn't a topic for us to discuss this specific part of it. And it, it just might not be subject to a conversation with the chair or the vice chair um, for various reasons, and this is just a mechanism to make sure that it can happen, even if, you know, there're shortfalls in, in the governance at the chair. And I think that's primarily the way that I see the, the utility in this, but there are other reasons why you would want to use it as well. But I wouldn't want it to be the automatic mechanism for all directors to always do it this way, because we can show some faith in, in the chair, hopefully, but also just in the process. show some faith in in the chair, hopefully, but also just in the process of getting things on the agenda. So, yeah. I I think it's good, though, because it's it communicates a lot. And either of these two options is okay with me, but I wouldn't mind your your opinions collectively on on how this might look. I am actually thinking for what I just talked about in regards to it being kind of security and and understanding for that is that you don't necessarily need the chair to acknowledge it to read it out. But at the same time, that's that's just good practice, like, please let me know, right? But requiring me may not be necessary. Uh Director Seega?
Yeah, um, really interesting. Um, I would like to see a notice of motions added to the agenda near the end.
I agree. I think that that practice is very useful, especially given like the knowing how the meeting gone and knowing, you know, being able to check in with one another and how the meeting has gone and how we can improve, and that this kind of fits in with that, too. I think we can move on. Director Law?
I know you want to move on, but just want to make sure the this is one, two. This is not either or. This is both, right?
Um, I meant to do do one of the two options, so.
One of the two.
Yes, one of the two.
Can you do both? I mean, because there might be a chance, there might be a time, like you say, you have a, you call a a a special meeting for urgent business. You know, whatever the whatever you have here for committee, it might be twenty-four hours, whatever your bylaw says. You if you do this, it negates the ability for an urgent notice of motion. Do you know what I mean? Like, how how do you do that? How would you do both?
Um, I would say that you would do the first option, then. You'd be providing it at the meeting. The notice of motion at the meeting, so for.
So what I was going to say, so what I was going to say is if you wanted to to sort of do both of these, you could say for a meeting, no, not a regular scheduled meeting.
Oh, you.
It's two.
Yeah.
But for an urgent meeting or a special meeting called within a certain time, then it you should have the ability for a notice of motion. That that's what I'm saying.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's being written down. Please go.
All right. So the next section is um motions. Um. So twenty-two A, I'm not proposing any changes, but I just do want to touch on this for a second. Um. Board may debate and vote on a motion only if it is first made and seconded. So I'm not proposing any changes. Generally, um, staff are presenting a staff report. Um, and the board is allowed time to, you know, directly ask staff questions and then a d- a motion is made. Um, we have had in the past some motions made uh right off the start, and it becomes complicated after the discussion has been had and um directors want to change those motions. So um I just wanted to touch on that briefly. I would like to add a section, the second one there, if a motion is not seconded, the motion is lost for a lack of seconder. Currently, we don't have that. And then the third line, um, after a motion has been made, it is deemed to be in possession of the board, but may with permission of the board be withdrawn at any time by the mover and seconder before a decision or amendment. And this has happened quite a bit in the past where we're looking at defeating a motion, doing a second motion, amending, it just gets complicated. This would be um a way to simplify those options. Um, so twenty-two C, um members may make the following motions. I would like to add recess and point of order. And change, move the previous question, um which isn't used at this table to call the question, should um a member think that we are at a position where we need to call the question? And um change, refer to committee to refer to committee or staff, so that that is a an an option, a motion that is an option to the board. And then twenty-two D, I'm just proposing that we, like, all of the motions are in order of precedence, and I'm just proposing that we change the precedence uh to adjourn, recess, point of order, call the question, refer, postpone, amend, table, or withdraw.
Any comment on this? I think these are all good changes. I think just um this is one of the tools that directors have available to them when it comes to I would like to move to call the question. It's not something you yell out and then it gets seated. It's something that you need to actually be in speaking order and move the to call the question. And then if it passes, we go to an immediate vote. So like, you know, you you may think we're wasting time, but I just want to make sure, at least from a governance perspective, um that everyone gets to have their say. But if we're stuck in a loop of some two people saying the same thing to each other and not moving on it, then the feel free, right? So um I think that's that's a good practice. So thank you for pointing that out. Uh Director Seega?
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate this clarification, because there's been so many um times when there's been a motion, then it gets changed, then it gets changed. And when it comes to the vote, I'm really not sure. So I think a statement of the motion before the vote that i- is really important. And um yeah, the this um clarification of process is great. Thank you.
Yeah, so let's put in the procedures bylaw that the CEO will read out the motion before a vote is called. So like, read out the motion as it's written, so that we're not relying on a director to read it out or or for me to just kind of go do that. The only thing that I would speak to, though, is for things like second reading, third reading. Um, we may not have to read those out every time, but that can be a stylistic thing. I think we're all good. Let's keep moving. Oh, sorry, Director Laquesia, please go ahead.
I have a I have a quick note on section twenty-two, what we're just talking. It said new a motion is not seconded, the motion is lost uh for lack of seconder. Don't we have that already?
It's not. It's not recorded in the in the bylaw. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next section, uh it just simply says, until it is decided, a motion made at a board meeting to refer to committee precludes an amendment to the main question. This is already covered in the previous section and motion, so I'm just suggesting that we remove it. Okay, so motion for the main question and amendments. Um, so I'm suggesting to remove uh twenty-two, twenty-four A and B, as it's covered in the amendment section, or will be covered in the amendment section. Um, twenty-five A and B, I'm just recommending that we combine those two into one for simplicity sake. Um, any member may move to amend a motion that is under debate, provided that the amendment is relevant to the main motion and does not materially change its purpose. Twenty-five C, um recommending to removal, remove it. Um, because we do not require uh directors to provide a a written um motion. Uh, twenty-five D, um I'm proposing to change it to a proposed amendment must be decided on or withdrawn before the motion being considered as put to vote. Just simplifying it, no change to the next one. Um, and twenty-five F, basically just changing the language to make it easier to read. And then twenty-five G, no change. Um, okay, amendments continued. So twenty-five H and I um is very confusing in my mind. Um, so the chair must put 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 the main question and its amendments in the following order for the vote of the board. A motion to amend a motion, amending the main question, et cetera. It's it's not worded well. Um, I've provided two options on the right-hand side um to simplify the wording. Basically, um when an emo- when a motion is amended, the amendment must be voted on first. So it's basically being revoked voted on in the reverse order. So uh the second option there is to say amendments shall be voted on in the reverse order to which they were moved.
So I think the first set of wording is more clear, as long as we understand that it's first in, last out, like it's a stack of amendments, and you start at the top of the stack once you're done and move towards the main motion. There's a lot of different ways to explain it, but that's the simplest one that I have, is that somebody puts the main motion down. And then there's an amendment. And then there's an amendment to the amendment, and we just have to do it from the top down once all those are tabled. And then we'll finally get to the main motion. If you're into board games, this is like the the core of board games. So so, yeah.
Okay. Carry on. Okay, so I have um rewritten this section, uh twenty-six. Mostly just for um simplicity's sake, I'm um not making any major changes. It's just uh simplicity and being more clear. This is rarely, I've rarely seen this used at the board, but it could be considered um where um mid-chain or um, you know, a decision looking back doesn't make sense and you want to reconsider it. Um, potentially uh information changes that you become aware of. So this just kind of outlines the process and it outlines when you can't do it. So.
Quick clarification there, uh twenty-six one. Uh, there's usually a time limit on that at the same meeting. Uh, isn't that right?
Um, it 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 is written in some bylaws. There are some by um bylaws that state it can be done within one board meeting.
Or at or at the same meeting or.
Yeah, and the meeting following.
Or the immediate.
Yeah, so that's.
Two isn't happening.
Uh, yeah, if but that's a decision of the board.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not legislated.
This it does just read as a clarification.
Yeah.
Okay. Director Solder? No, okay. Okay.
Director Seega.
Director Seega, go ahead.
Yeah, I just need some clarification. Like, two pages back, I thought that it said only one amendment is allowed. And then you're talking about stacking amendments, and that's it's the stacking of the amendments that always foils me up. And I'm not sure what I'm voting on. So can you clarify, can you only have one amendment to the motion?
So there's there's two different things. So you can only debate one motion or amendment at a time, right? And then once that's tabled, somebody may um move to amend the motion. And that can only happen on one branch. It can only, you can only amend an amendment once. Um, but that's that's a limitation on the amount of times that you can successfully amend an emotion uh or or an amendment. And so it just, it's to prevent recursive loops of people. I move to amend this decision so that it's acceptable to me and I'll vote for it. And then the person who might be opposed will go, well, I vote to move to amend it to or I move and and successfully. And then suddenly you have a recursive loop. Doesn't happen often, but procedurally, it just, it is a problem or can be. Because it's not necessarily in opposition to one another, but maneuvering around a point of contention without it being that way. That's the only time I've seen it without these kind of conversations involved and these kind of restrictions. So it's not that you can only have one amendment. It's that there's only one at a time, and you can't amend the amendment more than once. But once again, it comes down to the amount of times that it's done successfully. Someone can move to amend something and be defeated, but they just can't keep moving the same thing. Um, especially if it's been defeated, but that's covered by a different section, which is the reconsideration part. So I think that's that covers it. Heather, did I forget anything?
No.
Um, so just to clarify then, so if there is an amendment and the amendment is passed, then is it assumed that the original motion has failed, or do we have to go back and vote against that?
No, like, okay, so we have the original motion is to accept something, some policy, right? And so somebody moves and seconds it, and it's for debate. And then during the debate, somebody comes up with the fact that they want to move to amend the policy to change it from three seats to four or something, right? So that that has not the original motion to adopt the policy hasn't been, hasn't happened yet. We're putting something on top of it that needs to be considered first to move from three seats to four or whatever. And then what can happen is someone, once that's been moved and seconded during the discussion of the amendment, someone can move to amend that amendment to not only move it from three to four seats, but to designate seats for certain areas or subsections, like one for the Albany Valley, one for T-Shot, one for Kupatchasit, and one for Pat Deacon for some reason, right? Or whatever, right? And so and I just chose Pat because I like, not because he's right, but like trying to make it relevant is that you can only amend the amendment once. So is that where you want to expend the ammunition, so to speak? Right? And so what what we need clarification on is, once that amendment goes through, that amends the amending motion to go we are going to move from three to four seats and designate which communities get those seats, plus Pat. Is that okay? And then once that goes through, that amends the policy, which is then the policy includes that. How many times do you want to do that is the is the consideration? It it's confusing at first, but once you understand that it is a stack of motions that have to be dealt with in or in reverse order, then it just works. Still sucks, but it it's the best thing we got. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that really helped. Um, I I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's kind of something we've already done as well. So like, I don't think we went from three to four seats, or I can't remember the details, but like, we have had those conversations. So just making sure that when we talk about it and the rubber hits the road with a motion, that's the consequence of it. Like, this is, it's tedious but consequential. And that's why we have procedure around it, because this does have consequences, especially when we're taking up Pat's time. Sorry, uh, go ahead.
I like the alternative, and I apologize, I skipped on to twenty-six. So that was my weird comment in the beginning there. So I'm sorry about that, but I like the alternative state.
I I think we're okay to move on. It is more clear. So thank you, Professor.
Okay, the next section is talking about reports from committees. Um, the procedure bylaw outlines all of the options for the board to consider when receiving a report from a committee. I suggest that we re- remove this level of detail, as ultimately the board has the right to decide what to do with any committee recommendation.
Yes, I don't think there's any laws or bylaws that we have that give committees the ability to make a decision. I think the board can delegate certain things, but certain things they can't anyway. Uh, Director Sparrow?
I hear that. It says here the pros chains, that all committee recommendations are subject to approval of the board. Suppose we want to send it back to the committee. Would that not be worded there, too? Or because this is approval, which kind of nails it down to that.
It's um, it's uh outlined in the motion section of the bylaw, and that's just referring to a committee. So you already have that authority.
Director Boyko?
I agree that the board has to have the ability to reject what committees' recommendations are and send it back and everything, but all recommendations are subject to approval of the board or modification. That wording needs to be there to not just approval or denial, but modification. Uh however that wants to uh be said, amend the resolution. But that wording to change it has to be in there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a, that's a good comment. Um, the only other thing I would think is just to make sure that we affirm that, you know, we've received the comments of the committee, and that's a part of the materials, so that even if the board doesn't go in the direction that the committee proposed, that recommendation has been considered and does justify the work that the committee does. Um, Director Law, go ahead.
Yeah, just to maybe just to comment on uh on that, uh, the committee recommendations cannot be changed by the board. They are the committee recommendations. So the board, just to be clear, be careful on that. Otherwise, it's the board's recommendations, not the committee. So I I just want to maybe I just oppose the the addition of change language.
Yeah. Okay, so that might be just a a a language thing, then. It's like what we choose to do might be a modification of what's suggested, but that doesn't change what the committee suggested.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. I I think that's what was intended. Are we okay to move on? Yeah, I saw a thumbs up. Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, so currently twenty-eight A states that a board may continue a board meeting after five-thirty um with support of two-thirds of the members present. Um, so at the last Uh, with support of two-thirds of the members present. Um, so at the last committee, the whole meeting, we talked about. Potentially changing the um, start time of board meetings. So this will have to be changed. Um, and just for right now, I've put in um, a meeting which has a session. Has been in session for three and a half hours from the time it was convened as deemed to be adjourned, uh, unless the board resolved to extend it. Um, so we could just leave that as a placeholder for now and, and come back to this um, when we decide on the. Start time of board meetings. Um. And then twenty-eight B, a motion to adjourn. Um, either a board meeting or a debate at board meeting is always. In order if that motion has not been immediately preceded at that meeting by the same motion. So I just rewrote it to say, um. If somebody selects to adjourn the meeting and if that motion fails. You need to do some intermediate business before you make the same motion again. So it's just some clarity. And then twenty-eight C, um, I just suggest to remove that section.
Sorry, a second motion to adjourn can only take place after a substantive item is discussed. So this is basically, don't adjourn the meeting because you don't want to have the conversation. Okay. I, I think we're all good with that.
Um, how long do we want to go? Cause I'm recognizing it's ten after twelve and we're, we're not going to get through everything today. So. I fully expect another, a meeting.
Yeah, are we okay with adding this to a, to a future meeting? Yep. Okay, so could we have a motion to? I don't know what the motion would be to, not to postpone it, but to. Table the discussion. I think that's what it is. I can't remember what the specific wording is right now. Yeah, I can't remember because that's what. That's what's subject to it. But uh, what did we do last time?
So we didn't um, require a motion last time because we knew that this would be a multiple. Um, meetings, discussion. So we would just continue this on the next agenda.
Okay, as long as our discussion is made note of and that's, that's all good, then I think we're okay. So with that then, let's go back to, oh, I logged it again. Sorry. All right, I don't think that there's any other substantive items uh, beyond this report. So we can just have a motion to. I was gonna say receive the report, but it's not finished yet. So I think we're okay. I think what we'll do is we'll go through late business at which there's none. Do we have any questions?
No questions uh, through email and no questions on Zoom.
Okay, so what I think maybe instead of that, let's have a motion to continue the conversation at a future meeting of the committee whole. Direct, moved by Director Law, moved by Director Solder. Any comments? Sorry, yes, seconded. Any comments? It's seen that all those in favor on continuing the discussion at future date? Okay, motion carried. And we have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Director Sparrow and Director Roth and Director. Counselor. Uh, yeah, oh, sorry, question period. Yeah, please come on. You gotta use, you gotta use the thingy though. So yeah, yeah. And introduce yourself and where you're from.
I will do so. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize. I know everybody's here uh, and wants to go home. So Charles Mealy, uh, thirty-seven fifty-six Waterhouse Street. Beautiful Port Albany. Uh, I am a city councilor of the city of Port Albany. I'm not here in that capacity, of course, but I would like to speak on my experiences really quickly. Uh, thank you very much to um, staff for, for that report and uh, it gets my blood going a little bit, talking about procedures and, and how we, we do things. Um, so just really quickly, I just want to talk, uh, so uh, in our meetings, city council uses a motion to defer, postpone to continue discussion. Um, but knowing that more information is needed, the other option is the motion to table. However, the motion to table, uh, the, the discussion is over at that time. So. Um, so that's the, that's the one point I just wanted to say, but it is within the director's um, uh, ability to, to table any motion at any time. Um, instead of investing in expensive technology um, for recording votes. Um, a true Port Albany West Coast solution would be to require directors on Zoom to have a red and green piece of paper or paddle of some sort. To signify. Okay, this is just a comment, sorry. Um, and that's because you can see everybody within. As the chair, you can see everybody here. But if you are looking to record and to, to have visible uh, votes, then just to have something a little more visible at that point. So. Um, if a director wants to abstain, they can keep their camera off. And call it there. And so then it's not a big deal and we don't have to, we, I apologize, the regional district board doesn't have to invest in some. Uh, massive technology, um, if they need to. However, what I would say though is if there is a question, and I do understand Director Boyko is saying he cannot see the board. Is just to simply have when the chair has the microphone on to not be zoomed in. So just to have that, have that camera as stays out. Uh, because you, the, the chair, whoever it's, you, you, Chair Jack or whoever else is in that spot. Will be asking, calling the question and recording and talking about the voting. So go. Go to you. So just to have a wide angle all the time, that would solve it at least for now until you get a second camera or maybe a second microphone. Where it will, uh, you know, push into you as you speak or have the other camera go out. Um. Don't mind me, just writing some notes. Um, notice of motion. So notice of motion is, is used at coun- our council meetings. And I love it because it is uh, an ability to write down. And so what I would do, it's different for everybody, but I would write down the notice of motion or type it out. And hand it out to every single counselor, staff person and the mayor. And then it is discussed quickly at the end, but it is, does give the opportunity for the directors or counselors to have a fruitful discussion about it at the next meeting. Because they do have the ability to look and understand and think about what that possible motion can be. Um, the call to question, I believe, it's not all, but it should be on its own from my own personal experience in the past. Some may use their speaker spot to have the last say, then call question. Of course, it's up to the chair. But I have seen people do that to quell discussion and say, I'm having the last say, now I'm calling the question. So, um. If you do, if you're, and I, I agree with you, uh, Chair Jack saying, you have to be in the speakers list and it has to be done in the right way. You can't just yell out, call to question. So. And uh, the final one is uh, something that I do at council meetings. And I appreciate the mayor for allowing me to do this, but if the motion that I have put forward has, we've got amendment, we've got amendment, we've got amendment, I will just rescind the motion. And allow another counselor to come forward with a, a better, more structured motion. So uh, those are my experiences. I appreciate the time today. I really do.
Okay, that makes me think that, like, once the amended motion is written out or is, is, like, is the one that's debated. Then we check with the original movers and secanders, right? Because that does happen in other jurisdictions where. The original motion is ripped apart and a Frankenstein is put in its place. So I think that's just, might as well just have a new motion at that point. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, love the idea about the red and green. So it's it here, the Director Boyko wants to speak too. So I think, yeah, yeah. Um, so Director Boyko, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Counselor Mealy. Um. I like colors. Blah, 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 having things in your hand. We also got blurred screens, so you can't see us behind us, so it gets confusing, but it's not just about saving money on a potential. Um. Solution. This is something that NIMO uses. I've talked to their councils. It's quick, easy, simple and cheap. But. Some of the other directors today said our meetings, if you're not paying attention exactly to what's going on, they go so fast. Yep, nobody opposed, next thing, blah, blah, blah. And it's like, sometimes the chairs are racing each other to get the meetings done as fast as possible. And that's not really the point of. Being here and voting on things. It's making sure that your vote is counted and your opinion is mattered. So. Sometimes you got to slow things down and make sure things are done properly. And I've heard that today and I've heard that in the past many times. So. Sometimes we've got to take the way to make sure things are done properly. I mean, I can see what is here. But if I didn't have a big screen, I'd be hard pressed to see if someone's hands up or not right now on how things are, especially, you know. Where Counselor Solder is, I can see if her hand's up or down, but how many are there? I mean, and if someone's looking on their phone, watching a video, expecting someone to see on a video if a vote is hands up or down. And how many people got their camera turned off right now? Let's just have a look at that. I mean, that's also a problem too. So having a proper way to record votes is essential. Thank you. And we're the only regional district that doesn't do it for some reason. Thanks.
Thank you. I think the solution for being able to see people is just to have a, uh, do what Yucul does with the owl cameras. And have the owl camera join as a separate, um, as a separate participant, because then you can. You can just make certain cameras, the primary one that you see online. And then they can check because they can scroll the entire three sixty. And that will give you the human element that you, I think you are looking for. So I, like, and it's. It's expensive for an individual, but it's worthwhile investment for an organization to be able to do that. Um, Director Coots?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just kind of a question for clarity, maybe perhaps this is a lack of my own understanding, but um. Uh, do most directors not, do we not all currently have access to some form of. Electronic communication, whether that's an iPad or a laptop or something along those lines. And if that is the case. Rather than having to purchase a whole new system without any owls, would it not make more sense for. All directors, at least during votings, even if we're in the room here, to zoom in. I know that um, Director Lacocie is. Uh, main, I know Penny tends to go in, my perma-director, uh. Goty tends to zoom in, so she's able to see things while she's in the room. And then that would also sort of alleviate some of the voting, especially in those voting circumstances. As we've said. I'm on screen currently because I'm speaking, but nobody else is here. But if we're all on our own little cameras on the side. As uh, Director Mestrangeello is on camera and off camera due to her audio and not audio. It would be no different than that of having us all be here during those voting sequences. Just food for thought. Go.
Thank you for your input. I think that's something we need to consider because we have had complaints about. Directors joining online and being here. So there are considerations around how we use the technology. Because I use this for when it doesn't shut off. Um, I use this for the materials, right? And so iPads are usually best used for source materials, not for taking notes. You should use a piece of paper for that. Um. But the actual recording of votes that is cheap and easy that Director Boyko is speaking to is use your phone. Right? And if you don't have a phone, we'll provide something for you to do that. Um, or a voting device. It could just be a small. Phone-shaped tablet, but there are things that we can do in order to do that. And so that, that's what makes it cheap and easy. Um. Because if everyone's having to go, oh, I gotta switch from the thing on my laptop to the voting thing and. Suddenly that creates a lot of time kill, but if we have a phone in front of us that is dedicated to that or some other. Mechanism, then that, that makes sense. Uh, Director Boyko, Director Roth and Director Law.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I remember we had some about six months ago where there are directors in the room that are zoomed in and. It caused problems and I'm trying to remember exactly what problem it was, but. I remember some directors like to have it so that they can zoom in and read things, especially if it's detailed stuff on a presentation in front of them. So we need to revisit that, but every director in the ACRD, I believe, has a government-supplied electronic device. I mean, mine's right here. And that's basically how it is. So no one's lacking technology. Um, finding a way to do it simply and easily is a solvable problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ross.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Um, I use my work computer, but if I add my laptop and come in, it creates interference and noise with the meeting. So it, it doesn't work. Thanks.
Yeah, the, the reverb, uh, has happened in, in this, in this meeting, or at least at board meetings. As well as in my Huita meetings as well. So like, it's good to do it, but you got to turn off your microphone. You got to turn off your speakers or else it gets. It gets hard. Uh, Dr. Lawn and Dr. Solder?
Just gonna suggest this question's probably a, a great opportunity for a standing committee or something like that to go away and uh, talk about it. Otherwise we'll. Get into uh, uh, management, which I don't think we're here for.
Thank you. Uh, okay, and then Director Solder?
Just a quick comment. Not all, all people have the devices, um, government devices. The alternates don't. I do because I'm with the city. But not all.
Thanks. And we do understand that you have uh, sound issues, Director Mestrangeello. So like, that's, that's not the same thing. So please go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering, and I think there is an option for when people are in the. In the, in the room, if they want to log online, there should be in, a meeting option in Zoom. Where you have people join and they have no access to the microphone. Um, something like that. That's an easy thing to fix right away and it would clear up any problems that might happen with the mic.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments on this debate of the adjournment? I'm sitting down. I'll declare, uh, or sorry, all those in favor of adjournment? All opposed, in motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
And that meeting, the software that NIMO uses is actually a Canadian software, by the way, out of Ontario. So that's good to know.
And it.
Great day, Avery.
It hooks into Zoom really well too. Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah, it works really well. Thanks, guys. Have a good day.
Well, since we're off, um, and I have one question for John Jack.